All right, let's call this special town meeting to order. Thank you all for coming. As I always allude to, having a special town meeting is just that, special. And it should be used for something very pending or of a very urgent issue. Well, this is one of those times. But always be cautious as to them, since there are fewer townspeople that usually turn out for these. It's easy to have something proposed to you to consider that might not pass muster at an annual. It's just something we should all scrutinize and take very seriously. I do. Lately, lately, there've been many televised meetings of the Board of Selectmen, Finance, Collector/Treasurer, Accounting, Assessors, and most everyone else related to our town regarding this issue. Their mission is keeping our town running day to day. However, watching these meetings, I, and hopefully most here, are aware of the barrier we now face with being able to move ahead. Until we can satisfy the Department of Revenue, and tonight they might be referred to as just DOR all the time because it's a much easier, we and they cannot go forward without our approval of a plan which must meet their requirements. So remember that this is so carefully put together that amendments to this plan can change it so much that the outcome would again require coming back to them and returning here on another night again. It's just a possibility or a reality depending on what happens here tonight. Surely, it will be explained in hopefully a very easy-to-understand way, so we all know the issue and the suggested way through this, so that we can get back to our expected day-to-day operations and expectations of our town. It hasn't been easy on anyone, but at the same time, it's inspiring to watch so many people spending so many hundreds of hours to come up with workable solutions to get us there in the very best possible way. Like many here, I do not go to these meetings so as not to be biased in any way. Yet, I watch on our community TV and on YouTube to better understand the situation and their reason for calling a special town meeting. With that said, let's begin. Brian?
Good evening. I would like to start this session by giving you an explanation as to why this special town meeting has been called, followed by why it is so important that we pass the articles on tonight's warrant. The State Department of Revenue has discovered a deficit in our fiscal year 2017 financial report, and as a result, we are unable to set the 2018 tax rate until this deficit is resolved. Hence, the reason for tonight's town meeting. As our financial team continues investigating reported line item deficits, we are finding a number of them that are the result of reporting errors. These particular sums of money that were mistakenly reported should be returning to the town in the form of free cash once the overall deficit question has been resolved. We can't at this time give an exact final figure as the audit is still underway. This brings me to tonight's need for the articles that will be taken up shortly. As I mentioned earlier, until the town approves a solution to the deficit problem, such as the proposed financial transfers before you, we will not be able to resolve our fiscal year 2017 state-reported deficit. And consequently, we will be unable to set a tax rate or send out our 2018 tax bills which support our ongoing operating budget. Without this tax revenue coming in and with no other options, we would most likely have to borrow money to continue our town operations and to meet our financial obligations of the future. After our lengthy meeting with the State Department of Revenue in Worcester yesterday, they made it perfectly clear that fiscal year 2017 deficit needs to be resolved as soon as possible. The Department of Revenue has also offered their expertise to assist the town and our officials as we move forward in providing timely and accurate reporting of the town's financial status to them. I personally felt the meeting yesterday was an open and honest discussion between myself, Darrell, our town administrator, our town accountant, our town treasurer-collector, our consultant, and the DOR representatives present, and there were four. They set expectations and timelines for us to achieve, and I am confident our town will meet the various milestones in front of us. Our boards and financial team will meet in the very near future to review the state's recommendations. Since we just met with the DOR yesterday in Worcester, our town officials have not yet had the opportunity to share the information formally amongst our colleagues. So, the question before us, what are our options to deal with this problem? The Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee had numerous meetings to discuss options, excuse me, discuss options for resolving the deficit. We investigated a short-term loan and were advised by the DOR, Department of Revenue, that this was not an acceptable option under mass general law, given these deficit circumstances. We investigated doing an across-the-board 3% cut to every single department in town. After much discussion, there was a mutual agreement that it would be unfair and detrimental to departments halfway through the current fiscal year to decrease their budgets in this manner. This would be a last option. So, we decided to ask departments to voluntarily cut their budgets, if at all possible. Most departments were able to do so to some degree, and these budget cuts amounted to roughly $50,000, which would enable us to reduce the amount we might ask to transfer from our stabilization accounts if we were to move in that direction. We very much appreciate these departments' willingness to assist the town in dealing with this financial problem. We also considered two previous free cash warrant articles which had been approved, one for $16,000 to perform a feasibility study for this council on aging, and one for $50,000 to replace the front hall steps. After lengthy discussion, we decided that both of these projects are important and necessary as part of the town hall renovations, and if we utilize this money to reduce the deficit, we would still need to come back to a future town meeting to refund, to refund these projects. Pardon me. So, after investigating these various options, we came back to our stabilization, also known as rainy day accounts. One of these, the Town Hall Stabilization, has roughly $199,000 currently, and the other account, our Town Stabilization Account, has roughly $208,000. The recommendation of the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee is to use approximately $135,000 from each of the stabilization accounts, coupled roughly with the $50,000 from various town accounts, in order to cover the fiscal year 2017 deficit and identify 2018 budget deficiencies. The Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee agreed that our priority would be to replenish these stabilization accounts as soon as feasible. I hope my remarks have helped explain our reason for being here tonight and why the action you are being asked to take is necessary for the continued operation of our town. Thank you in advance for your consideration of the important action we must take together in order to resolve our budget deficit and set our 2018 tax rate. Thank you.
And I just wanted to point out, there's two new members on the Finance Committee this year. We have Betsy Ryder and Edwina Palasano, in case you see her unfamiliar face. Of course, Edwina, we all know you. Okay, you guys want to begin?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article Number One.
Second, second, second. Okay, the motion is made in second, did the take up Article One is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to appropriate by transfer from Town Hall Stabilization Fund the sum of $134,300, and from the Stabilization Fund, the sum of $65,912.28 for the purpose of funding fiscal year 2017 operating budget deficits as follows. Medicare and Social Security, $4,675.15. Treasurer's expense, $4,045.52. Health insurance, $38,045.27. Town Administrator and Staff Wages, $993.87. Planning Board Wages, $3,697.64. Highway Rate Wages, $1,639.53. Transfer Station Wages, $659.14. Inspections Wages, $1,552.68. Snow and Ice Expenses, $107,351.68. Snow and Ice Wages, $37,551.80. Total Amount, $202,12.28.
You heard the motion made and seconded in Article One. Is there any discussion?
I have a question as to...
Go ahead, get to the mic. And I usually ask people if you just state your name and the street you live on. We don't need to know your house number, but just so people have an idea when there's normal issues going on. Where are you coming from?
Okay, Betty at Elm Street. Betty Snow.
Thank you.
My question is, is the snow and ice expenses of $107,000, what is, what does that consist of? Usually, expenses, labor is far more the bigger part, and I just find that, I was just surprised.
So, the, the snow and ice budget is made up of the sand, the salt, all the materials, as well as the wages. It, it is traditionally, by most cities and towns, deficit, it's not funded fully from year to year because the state allows you to deficit spend in snow and ice. In other words, this is what the true number was for snow and ice last year? I'm not sure that I'm explaining, it's, it's a little funky to understand. So, normally, when we put the budget together for, for the following year, we know what that amount is upfront, and quite honestly, that did not get captured as we put the town budgets together for fiscal year 2018. So, it's a 2017 expense, right? I don't, I don't know if Darrell, go ahead.
How about, let's let the Finance Committee hit it.
So, your question is about the, why the wage line is so much less than the expense line? Well, you, that wage line would be, and Phil is in the audience, but that would be considered overtime and weekends. Their regular time, their eight to five, so to call, Monday through Friday, comes out of their regular budget that does not come out of snow and ice. Phil, wherever you went, am I correct? Thank you.
And so, just to clarify...
Get up, get up to the mic.
The $107,000, although it says it's fiscal year 2017, are you saying that that was what the actual cost was, but it wasn't included in last year's fiscal year, and so it's going to be included in this year's budget?
It was, that is, last year's actual cost of snow and ice. And so, normally, what happens is it is accounted for on the recaps, on the, on the cherry sheet at the end of the year, and there's either enough free cash or enough levy limit in our tax rate in order to pay for that expense. Whatever happened last year, when we put the budget together, we made a mistake. We missed it. We did not put that in the budget so it would be paid, purely and simply.
Any other questions?
In other years, we've always, it's always been paid.
Larry?
Larry Grossman, King Street. I'm glad that this young woman brought this up. We are allowed to have deficit spending in snow and ice every year.
Larry, just, just face here, you don't have to stare people down.
And Darrell said, usually, that would have been reported for the, before the town meeting last year, or...
On the town budget.
On the town budget. It wasn't reported. He has hit on exactly the issue why we are here today. It is not about transferring a few hundred thousand dollars to balance the budget. It has to do more with how did we get in this situation, and how come something, $140,000 didn't get unreported? And I go back to an audit report of August of last year that talked about the last two years of our town. This is on our website, everyone should look at this. And it all has to do with internal controls, reporting, the town accountant, the town collector, all these people, certain responsibility with the Finance Committee and the Selectmen. But this is what we should be discussing today. How did we get here? And it's not about band-aiding for getting our tax rate set. They had a very big meeting at DOR yesterday. They'd like us to vote all this like, you know, robots and set a tax rate and hope that we fix it next year, but we've had problems for three or four years. Actually, this report says almost 10, but it doesn't have to go back that far. And we should really be looking at some major changes of how we do business here, not just band-aiding fiscal '17. And in one of these articles tonight, Band-Aids fiscal '18, which we're in right now, and that's messed up. So, I hope that through these articles...
And Larry, Larry, try to keep it to the focus of the, I'm just, and only I'm correcting is they, I've watched many, many hours, as you have, of how we got to this. Tonight, we're at a point that if we don't do this, we have a state taking over our town.
I want to say one thing then about exactly that. The meeting yesterday, one thing came out, we don't have to vote yes for any of this. DOR will come in here and fix it. They will give us a consultant, we will pay some money, we may have problems with the accountant, we may have problems with the treasurer and collector, they will fix it. And I think after this many years, and everyone should read this audit, that's what I'm voting for. I'm voting against every article tonight, and I want DOR to come in here and fix it.
Okay, anybody else, any other comments?
I'd just like to, if I could, Mr. Moderator. DOR will come in and the town will be in receivership. It's not that they're going to come in out of their good graces and take care of this. I just want to clarify that for people in the audience. Big difference. They've already offered, as I alluded to in my opening statement, to help us to continue to improve the way we're doing business, but I don't think we want our town to be taken over by the state. That's just my personal feeling.
On a positive note, one thing I did hear in, in the meeting before this was, in a good way, I guess, the DOR has been watching all of our town meetings for the last few years back. They've been watching to see how committed we are to getting out, past this situation. So, it's up to us, they'll watch this meeting for sure. So, I wore a nice tie in case, but anyway. Any other comments?
Christopher Smith, Prospect Street. You know, it's something that, that I'm just wondering about technically, and I don't know if this got answered in previous meetings. We're taking a lot of this money out of the Town Hall Stabilization Fund, but weren't we committing that to Phase Two of the Town Hall as part of the overall 1.6 million? Isn't that a piece of that? And wouldn't then we require revisiting that article to, to amend that article to exempt this amount? Maybe council, I don't know.
Counsel. Want to grab it?
I'm not sure of the legal aspect of it, Chris, but I know the gentleman to my left does. But I will tell you that yes, those, that funds were part of the Town Hall Phase Two renovations.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting, I know that in the preparation of these articles and the motions, working with the town administrator, that there's been a careful review of the funding mechanism, and I'm assuming, and I've worked with the Department of Revenue myself as a town council city solicitor for more than 40 years. If they have mapped out this plan in a meeting yesterday at their office, regional office in Worcester, then they've anticipated that there may need to be some changes possibly in the stabilization fund in the future, possibly by future funding of that fund by town meeting. But this appears to be the solution to the immediate problem, and I frankly, I would echo the chairman's statements that it's much more preferable for the town with the recommendation and support of DOR to take these steps than to have the town be subject to receivership.
Any other comments?
Just a, just a quick comment, and, and try to keep this simple, at least in terms of what we need and where the money's coming from. Brian, you had mentioned early on that when all is said and done, we'll end up taking $260,000 or so from our stabilization accounts in total, and $50,000 from other expense budgets in the community to fund, if you add those two together, $310,000 deficit. As we're voting these articles, could someone, maybe on the Finance Committee, keep track of, of exactly how much stabilization dollars we're using in that article and how much we're using from those expense accounts, so that we know at the end that we are in fact taking 300, 260 out of stabilization and 50,000 out of, out of the expense budget? I think that would make sense. This article, this particular, this article, Article Number One, takes most, or if not all, of the deficit funding from stabilization. So, obviously, we're going to use more from stabilization in future articles as well as the 50 grand. The other, the other thing I did want to comment, and I kind of, having attended a lot of these meetings, dealing with this issue for the last several months, and believe me, these guys have worked their tails off in trying to deal with options, is that I do think the community needs to have two things tonight. Some sort of a, a committed obligation on the part of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee that we will, in fact, with the state's help, address the systemic issues within the financial systems of the Town Hall, and to do that as quickly as possible. And so, I think that, you know, that, 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 that makes a lot, a lot of sense.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, you've, you've had two, but I'll, I'll give you a space.
Okay. Quick question. The article that was in the newspaper, you referenced that you've made arrangements with Bay State Municipal Accounting Group. Is that in place? And what was the outcome of yesterday's meeting, other than either receivership or...
Well, so the answer to your first question is yes. Bay State has been a consultant with us for a number of months now and continues to be. They were actually, attended the meeting in, in Worcester that we had with the Department of Revenue. And, and so, second part of your question was, and the way forward, and to Mike's point as well, totally agree. So, we met yesterday, we have not, as, as individual boards had a chance to meet and go, not, not every member of each board was there. So, to answer your question, they were very matter-of-fact, the state, that is, they were definitely wanting to work with us, they want us to succeed, but they have high expectations on a go-forward basis of exactly how we're going to achieve those goals. We have their local representative will be out here, meeting with our financial team. We've put, we've already had the recommendation from the state to put a couple of processes into place rather quickly to, to keep up on a go-forward basis with things. So, we haven't detailed it yet or ironed it all out, and I'm not, I'm certainly not trying to avoid yours, avoid yours or Mike's question. We just haven't vetted, vetted it out, but change is coming.
Go ahead, Mike. And Mike, I just want to say, I've seen you at a lot of these meetings, helping from an outside.
Yeah, I, the other thing I thought we would try to commit to the community is that we will try, Finance Committee in particular, try to, or at least make a promise, whether it be written or what have you, and understanding that we will try to restore our stabilization monies in our May town meeting. That notwithstanding, that notwithstanding, I, I do want to go on record that I, I think we need to fund this deficit tonight. We need to be able to set our tax rate. I don't know what the state said yesterday. If we didn't fund this deficit tonight, what would happen in terms of our being able to fund, to set a tax rate, rather? If we don't set our tax rate, we're not going to generate any income for the community, which means that Laura Lee's going to have to go out and borrow operating monies for the next several months, which are millions of dollars, I assume, or if not, millions, hundreds of thousands, which is going to cost us additional interest and time and effort to do so. So, you know, I'm in favor of moving ahead with, with funding this deficit. I think we do need a plan to fix the systemic issues that we have in the Town Hall, but I do think that with the state's help and with a commitment on the part of you guys, that we will, within the next, I don't know, 60, 90, 120 days, have a plan in place that's going to address the problems that we have that have caused this deficit to arise.
Okay, you want? Go ahead.
So, two years ago, we came to town, town meeting, and we took $147,000 for stabilization, and you got a commitment from the Finance Committee and the Board to replenish that. And you have a commitment from us that we will replenish it. I don't want to give a date. And I can tell you at the meeting yesterday, DOR knows that we want to put that money back. Their suggestion to us is, once our financial house is in order, and we're closer, we're, we're getting there, believe me, we're better than we were three years ago. So, doesn't seem it some days, but we are better off. Their suggestion to us was, have a plan to get this money put back. You don't have to put it all back at once, but take two, three years, put it back, because one of the issues that we will run into when we hit annual town meeting is capital items, typically free cash we use for capital items. We don't, our budgets are tight, and so, we didn't do a lot of capital items last year. I'm sure there's capital items that will come up at this year's town meeting, and some of that money will have to be used for those, some of those capital items. But you have, at least my commitment, that that stabilization fund will be replenished to what it was and hopefully more, once we're done with this.
Okay. This is going to be a two-thirds vote required, so it's at least a majority of, of us, and I'd like to just see, all those in favor of Article One signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? I call it passed. Okay.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article Two.
You've heard the, second? You've heard the motion made and seconded to take up Article Two is in your handout.
I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the stabilization fund the sum of $65,664.21 for the purpose of funding the following fund balance deficits for prior-year capital projects. Smith Academy Roof and Windows, $18,676.39. Water Emergency Generator, $4,261.73. Connecticut River Dyke Repairs, $3,776.87. FY05 Sped, $364.12. Main Street Sidewalks, $18,857. FY06 Early Ed Partnership, $341. FY09 Title I, $197.35. MBLC Library Grant, $6,924. Homeless Transportation, $497. Town Hall Renovation Two, $11,768.75, for a total of $65,664.21.
You've heard the motion made in Article Two. Is there any discussion?
So, the band renovation project was scrapped, that these were monies that were allocated but not spent then, or were they spent?
These were monies that DOR sees are in deficit. So, you talked about the band room that was in it at our meeting yesterday, and Derek can talk a little bit about this. can talk a little bit about this. Derek got together with Brenda. They figured out whatever the problem was in recording it. Justin, from Bay State Accounting, said he agreed with it. DOR said, fine, we can take that off. We assume, as we go through some of the bigger ones, that those will get fixed.
So these may be bookkeeping errors?
Absolutely.
So, especially the $18,857 for the cement sidewalks on Main Street, we were told at Town Meeting that that was 100% funded by grants, yet it shows here as a deficit. So is that Larry Curly &amp; Mo did an accounting error? Is it bookkeeping error?
All right. No picking on people. I won't allow that.
Well, we don't... The town does not owe anybody. The project was paid for, so we think it's a bookkeeping error.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Joe, may I?
Yes. Go right ahead.
Larry, so to that point, in my opening remarks, I said that some of the apparent deficits might actually be bookkeeping errors. These have to be researched, but if that's the case, these amounts or anything that's proven to be a bookkeeping error would, in fact, once we satisfy that with the state, would come back to the town as free cash. So we had this conversation yesterday with the DOR.
Okay. Mike?
And I just wanted to ask, Ed, in your motion, how much was from stabilization and how much was being funded from other budgets to cover these? Did you actually mention that in your motion?
Yes.
All of it from stabilization?
Yes.
When you get the warrant, that's what I go off of. The warrant is posted a few weeks... Is it two weeks? Two weeks before a Town Meeting. In the intervening time, when they work with DOR, Finance, Accounting, they fine-tune all the numbers. So that's where the motions come up that read a little different, and I think on the handouts are the motions and the warrant. So in the future, just remember, a warrant is an early notice of what they knew at that moment. And then two weeks later, when the Town Meeting comes, is when they know the exact numbers, put together by a lot of people. Okay. This is going to be a two-thirds majority, again, same as the first one. All those in favor of Article Two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Moderator?
Ms. Doty.
I move we take up Article Three.
The motion's been made and seconded to take up Article Three is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the vote taken under Article 37 of the May 2017 Annual Town Meeting by reducing the following fiscal year 2018 operating budgets and further transfer the sum of $49,630 to fund fiscal year 2018 operating budget deficiencies. They include town clerk expense, $335. Election and registration expense, $100. Fire department salaries, $1,250. School department, $31,826. Treasurer title tax, $3,000. Unemployment, $5,000. Treasurer expense, $1,633. Treasurer certification, $1,000. Collector expense, $366. Accountant expense, $1,000. DPW vehicle lease, $2,120. Police department expense, $1,000. An accessory salary, $1,000, for a total of $49,630. I beg your pardon? And what did I say? Assessor's salary.
The irony is here...
$1,000 was the last one, for a total of $49,630.
The irony is here is we have a keeper of the gate here now that has to... And she truly does a great job, has to make sure that everything's right, because as I said, even with DOR, they look at every word, every number, every specific. So she's not being rude to her. She's just keeping us in order, and thank you for that. Okay. You've heard Article... The motions made under Article Three. Is there any discussion?
Flaherty, Primrose Path. I've been attending the last few meetings. I do have a question about the first part of the article. Excuse me. Are we actually funding FY18 or FY17? So that potentially is a typographical error in the top?
Daryl's got that over here.
Because we're trying to finalize 17, correct?
We are finalizing 17 with the other two articles, but this article funds deficiencies in this year's budget, which is fiscal year 18.
No, it's actually reducing...
Yeah. Reducing the budget amounts in 18.
Right. So the first part of the article is reducing FY18 to fund FY18. That's how the article reads.
I'll check that.
Like I said, I've been at these meetings, and we're trying to fix 17.
We've got to get this right.
So that should be... My understanding is that's a typographical error then. Right. We're taking money from 18 to fix FY17 issues, correct?
Correct. Yes.
But that's not how this article reads.
No.
It was in the name, 17.
Reducing the FY18 budget and further transfer the...
Any help is good to get through what we're in.
Just after being at the meetings, I know I brought it up multiple times. This is 17, FY17 issues that we're fixing.
Reducing FY18's budget.
And you've been at a lot of meetings. It's certainly appreciated.
So that would relate to the first two articles, right?
No, no, no. But I thought Marlene, I thought Article Three was...
Article Three on the warrant?
Yes.
Right. Right. It was voted at the May 2017 Town Meeting, fiscal year 18 budget. It says fiscal year 18.
It's to fix fiscal year 18, right? Correct? So what I said was right.
But what fix though?
Where's the motion?
These things.
Which one? Because these are all reductions, though.
I guess my question is, is that if we're already trying to fix FY18 projects, why are we moving ahead when we're really trying to fix 17?
And they got to get the wording right. And I know when they went out to meet with them yesterday, they had to have all these numbers in exact order, so...
That's what that says, 2018 operating budget.
Okay. I thought that was...
We took it out of here. We talked about this year. Where's it going? For FY18. It's going to fill that $49,630 deficit. The recap sheet shows a deficit. A deficiency in fiscal year 18. $49,630. Can you answer that? Can you answer it so I can...
According to our fiscal year 18.
Well, because we're over our levy limit.
So is this worded...
18.
Is this worded?
The answer to where it's going is we're over the levy limit.
Okay. So do you want to explain that now? Do you want to explain it, or do you want Marlene to?
I'll do my best.
I'm understanding the vote was from FY18.
Okay. All right. They think they've got it here, pretty sure.
Okay. So the motion is correct on the fiscal 18 recap. We are $49,630 off of our levy limit. We're over. So this is reducing so that we stay within the levy limit for fiscal year 18.
Yeah. So the motion is right.
A good question.
So we're over the levy limit, but we're actually taking everything from FY18. The way this reads is to fix FY18 deficit.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
My understanding of that makes me question, do you really need transfer the sum to fund the deficiencies? If you're reducing it, just reduce it.
Oh, it's all in the wording. It's all in the wording. Oh, it's in the wording.
Yes.
I promise you, it's in the wording. And we don't want to come back to this. We want to move forward from it.
I do, but...
Yeah. You get paid by the word. Okay. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of... We're on three, right? Okay. All those in favor of Article Three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Article carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article Four.
The motions were made and seconded to take up Article Four is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to amend the vote taken under Article 36 of the May 2017 Annual Town Meeting and abolish the fiscal year 2018 Building Inspection Revolving Fund, Electrical Inspection Revolving Fund, Plumbing Inspection Revolving Fund, and Gas Inspection Revolving Fund under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 32. Sorry, right? I don't know what I'm looking at. General Laws, Chapter 44, subsection 53E and a half, effective July 1, 2017, and further transfer the remaining balance to the general fund.
You've heard the motion read and seconded by on Article Four. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
What is the remaining balance that will bounce to the general fund, please?
Roughly $70,000.
Okay. Now, everyone in this room, I don't have a good memory, but I do remember this. These funds were established not that long ago, and there was quite a bit of emphasis that we are going to move inspection services, income and expenses to revolving funds so we could enter the 21st century in accounting, and that will not impact our annual budget, and it will not bloat our budget with money that goes in and out because of inspection services. Now we have acquired $70,000 in these funds, and now we're told we want to dump them into the general operating fund to spend or to balance last year's budget. So I think we need a little more explanation of how come three years ago, this was the greatest thing since sliced spread, and now we're getting rid of them.
Not to be sarcastic, but that's what they said about the George Foreman Hamburg maker. I'm sorry. I just... I had thought of it. Do you want to answer that?
So the...
He'll go first. I'll go second. Go ahead, Brian. You start.
All right. I'll say, and then you can correct me. It was the consultant that we're using, Larry, Bay State Municipal. The feeling was that to make sure that the expenses and the services are being received and paid for correctly, to actually have it in one fund rather than to have these separate funds. So it was basically their recommendation to just go back, because Ed actually had asked this question a couple of weeks ago. And they just thought it was from an... Actually, from an accounting perspective, thought it would be easier to go back to the way it was of just having it in and out rather than having the separate revolving accounts. So... I don't... Daryl, did I do it?
Yep.
All right.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of Article Four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article Five.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article Five.
Oh, I move that the town vote to table Article Five.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to table Article Five. There's no discussion until the turnout of the vote. All those in favor of tabling Article Five signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Doty.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to table Article Six.
Motion's been made and seconded to table Article Six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. I hereby declare this Town Meeting dissolved, and thank you so very much for coming. I know it's not the easiest thing, and hopefully, we're getting past this issue, so...
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.